I'll call the meeting to order at 6:03 if you will please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Good evening. Thought I'd quote a president that was, some people here were alive when he was president. John F. Kennedy said, "Let us not seek the Republican answer or the Democratic answer, but the right answer. Let us seek to fix the blame. Let us not seek to fix the blame for the past. Let us accept our own responsibility for the future." Lord, we thank you for this day and each of these leaders. Help them to make wise decisions for the good of our citizens and employees. Amen.
Thank you, Joe. Mike, you'll call the roll, please.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schlack.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of July 26th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos. Second by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Organizational business.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Big crowd out there tonight. Almost resembles Comerica Park on a weekday night there. Nobody's out here. Kids need to ask for, request more people, I think.
I mean, they was busy with Sweet Blue.
It was definitely there, so. Just a quick up, a few quick updates. Hard Rock Concrete has opened up the west side of Rosedale Boulevard from Moore Avenue or Moore Road to Wick Road, including the driveway approaches. They're now preparing to pour concrete early next week on the west side of Park Avenue from Champagne Road to Angelique. I noticed there, a thing there of Tony from Hard Rock was going west side first. He's a west side guy, and I thought maybe that had something to do with it. But they're getting, making some progress there. Their subcontractor for underground work is DeAngelo Brothers, and they've completed the pipe, sewer pipe installation on Philamine Boulevard from Park Avenue to Colwell Avenue. For the concrete sectioning program, Savon Cement continues to work on the Wick Road. They're now working on the straightaways from Lawrence Avenue to Fox Avenue. Work will soon continue from Fox Avenue to Rosedale Boulevard. And then after Hard Rock leaves the area of Rosedale and Wick, they'll do a little bit of work from Rosedale to Vine. And hoping, I think there might be some debating going on in the back and maybe some betting going on. I'm hoping that Savon will be complete with that portion of Wick by time school opens in early September. It's going to be very tight, but we'll see. We're doing our best. Water main replacement, contractor for the Wynona Avenue, this is the Champagne Road Course Road project. It's Brico excavating. They've been delayed in obtaining some of the parts they need for this project, amongst other projects that they're also working on, the supply chain issues affecting the water pipe industry. They are scheduled to have pipe delivered early next week and should start the project shortly thereafter. They were waiting to make sure they had everything ready to go before they opened everything up and made a mess that they were not going to be able to get through. The fire department's ISO, this is the insurance services office, rating has improved from a five to a four. That's, that's good, going down. It's a 10, 1 through 10 scale. This review is done every five years by ISO. The ISO fire suppression rating schedule, the FSRs, evaluates four primary categories of fire suppression: fire department, emergency communications, water supply, and community risk reduction. The FSRs include standards set by the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA. And the businesses and residential fire insurance rates are largely determined by this rating. If you look on your insurance, your home insurance, you'll see what the ISO rating for the city, and that will have an effect on, on your, what you're paying. So this should have a positive effect on those rates. I can't guarantee anything to your insurance companies, but we're doing everything we can here. I know that this process, I did this when I was down in Gibraltar. It is a bearable process to go through, so thank you Chief Ken and his staff to help get through this. And I imagine Tom's staff was involved as well because of the water. They look at the water supply and the age of the structure, infrastructure, so. So thank you to both those departments, and hopefully they'll have a positive impact for the residents. Talk about the fire department. They're planning to host their 2022 Open House on Sunday, October 9th, from 12 to 3 o'clock. That'll be at the fire station there in Roosevelt. Looking forward to that event. The Downriver Community Conference, Brownfield Consortium, they approved the assessment grant application that was submitted to conduct a Phase 1 assessment at 6834 Park Avenue. That is the address of the building that the, we sent in to acquire from the Wayne County Treasurer's Office through tax foreclosure. And so we're getting that process to make sure we can have the Phase 1. I think the DDA has asked to hold off everything until we get a clean report from Minnesota Title, I believe is what we're waiting for. Just make sure there's nothing on the title work that we need to be concerned with. And if, if there is something and we decide not to send the check down, that voids the sale at that point. Now I'll be back here at the next meeting to let you know if that was the case or not. A found employee reached a milestone, or will reach a milestone with years of service of the city. That's going to be Steven Seigrest in the police department. He'll have 15 years on August 20th. And then a little piece I did not include, but I do have for you guys. I'll pass this out afterwards. I won't read it first. Congratulations to Chief Chris Egan for being accepted to the 284th session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. The FBI Academy, I gotta take my glasses off, second. The FBI Academy is a professional course of study for U.S. and international law enforcement managers nominated by their agency heads because of demonstrated leadership qualities. Participation is by invitation only through a nomination process. The 10-week program, which includes coursework in intelligence theory, terrorism and terrorist mindsets, management science, law, behavioral science, law enforcement communication, and forensic science, serves to improve the administration of justice in police departments and agencies at home and abroad, and to raise law enforcement standards, knowledge, and cooperation worldwide. Course study session, courses study sessions include approximately 265 officers, including up to 35 international students who take undergraduate and/or graduate courses at the FBI Academy campus. Classes are offered in a diverse set of areas, and officers participate in a wide range of leadership and specialized trainings. Officers share ideas, techniques, and experiences with each other and create lifelong partnerships that transcend state and national borders. The Yellow Brick Road is the final test of the fitness challenge, a grueling 6.1 run mile through a hilly wooded trail built by the U.S. Marines. Apparently, nobody's chasing these guys either. I don't get that. I just don't understand this. Along the way, the participants must climb over walls, run through creeks, jump through simulated windows, scale rock faces with ropes, crawl under barbed wire in muddy water, maneuver across a cargo net and more. When and if the students compete this, complete this difficult test, they receive an actual yellow brick to memorialize their achievement. Again, I want to congratulate Chief Egan on this honor. It is a very limited amount of people that get this opportunity. It is 10 weeks. I'm not too sure exactly when it starts, but it is something that will last in effect. I know on the chief, as many, a number of chiefs have gone through this program, and they still talk about the friendships that they met at Quantico through this program. So congratulations again, Chief Egan.
Speech.
Well done.
And just because I don't want anybody to miss what I read.
Oh, you got a copy of it?
Do have a copy for it, so. I said to keep a little bit of a secret back there. You guys all sit here and know what's going on, and then I, I don't have any surprises for you.
Is this more than one page?
Just one page. Just one.
Just one page. That's it.
Will I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions, just from, from residents asking me, any updates? I know you've been emailing people about the grants for, like, the historical house stuff. And then also, the other question, any date of, with the Dollar Show situation?
Yeah, so, start with the Dollar Show, because that one, we did notify the demolition company that with the event helping finish with the street fair, that facility is all his. So he is now scheduling those dates with SME. They have to be there to help, to put the asbestos removal. And then you'll start seeing some action thereafter. Once we get an actual date that he'll be taking a strike at the building, I'll let you know. I think that's when people want to be there to see that, is my guess. Regarding the grant from Wayne County, they've had some changes, and I'm not too sure if it's good or bad yet. I, the old director is no longer there. He was out on a medical. And then he's no longer with the county as of last week, I think it was. So the lady that took over, I've known her for 10 years while she's worked there. I think she just needs to be brought back up to speed as to what was going on, and then we can hopefully move forward shortly here. I, we do have the $104,000 grant. I was still hoping for the $196,000. And I will send her additional documentation that we sent to Terry to let him know, let her know what we were working on and what the Wayne County actually asked of us and that. But at this point in time, no additional updated, other than there were some changes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Come to public comments. Anyone wishing to comment may do so at this point. Just give your name and the street on which you reside. Please do not give your address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tina Gaviraki-Rigetti. I live on Leslie Avenue. I'm coming to you tonight as the Parks and Rec Commissioner and former city council member. I'm here to talk to you about your last council meeting and the termination of the Parks and Rec Director, Pat Hawkins. I know what I'm about to say doesn't change anything. However, I would like to know how you go from citizens' comments to determine, to the termination of a department head. Apparently, there must have been some discussion prior to your meeting, as you all seemed to have your minds made up before the vote. So there was very little questions from you on the direction you took. The day before his termination, there was a Parks and Rec Commission meeting. At that meeting, the following motion was passed, that the meeting between two commissioners and the chairperson, along with the director, sit down with the high school hockey team and talk about the ice contracts and work out this issue. This was agreed upon by all in attendance, with the exception of the director, who was on vacation at that time. And I don't care if you want to call it staycation, vacation. He wasn't present to the days leading to that discussion. So to me, the commissioner's, commission's motion meant nothing to you, so why have a commission? I fault myself at that commission meeting for not asking Mr. Lloyd who he was representing. Were you a resident, a teacher, city council liaison to the commission, or just a council member? You can answer that in your comments later. I will let you know at the time we hired Mr. Hawkins at the director position. He was the right person for the right job at that time, and he still is. However, U.S. council had felt otherwise. If all the issues that were stated were going on, why did no one bring any of those issues to the commission? I have never terminated a department head at a council meeting without a process protocol. He should have been afforded the opportunity to have discussed this, at this, up to his discretion and including a closed meeting upon his request. Again, he was on vacation. So for this, I have, so for this to have happened while I was, while on vacation, I feel is very disheartening. So I will tell you, under his leadership, there are some small lists of things that have taken place. The community center and ice arena was back, brought back to its former glory. The Hall of Fame was moved to the community center lobby. Parks and Rec have been replaced with new equipment through grants and department planning, as well as staying on top of Wayne County for our park village for Allen Park Share. Music in the parks, summer programs, lemonade in the shade, an affordable dance program was offered to residents. Ice vouchers for residents was offered to the Allen Park Hockey Association. He found and assisted us with the purchase of a showmobile that is currently being used for many events within the city and was purchased by the DDA and the festivities committee, which has saved us a lot of money. So you see, you don't have to live in the city to care about the community based on what I've stated above. So again, knowing that I cannot change your vote, and what is done is done, it's time for you to move on and appoint Director, Deputy Director, Rob Fulton to Director, and the Facility Manager, Kyle Carr, to Deputy Director. I have the utmost confidence in them in those positions as they have learned from the best. Mayor Pro Tem Lally, thank you for trying to ask for a meeting with the director. Unfortunately, your colleagues did not feel the same way. I also would like to, at this time, thank Mayor Pro Tem Lally for assisting the festivities committee with this past weekend's street fair. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. Wayne Smith. I live on Philamine. Just questioning whether or not there's, if anybody's going to address the sidewalks here in Allen Park. I ride my bike everywhere, and it's really, really bad. And I know, I think maybe about five years ago, I think there were some discussions with, along with the roads to be done, that there might have been some talk about doing the sidewalks. I'm just wondering if that's, if there's any talks regarding that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
There's no further comments to be made. Chief Egan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to let you know we're doing a community event this Sunday from 11 to 3 in our parking lot out front here. Jim Thorburn, who's good at coming up with some of this stuff, came up with badges. Help me out. Badges.
Bike swings.
Thank you. Bikes, badges, and, and wings. We have free wings going on. Our K-9 officer will be there. We'll have officers from every rank. We weren't able to do a national night out this year. We had officers out on FMLA and some sick with COVID and vacations, so this is probably going to be Detective Thorburn's last possible event that he's doing with this, besides a couple cop on the blocks. But, so 11 to 3 in our parking lot. Then we're going to have a charity ride. We're both, Mayor Pro Tem Lally and, and Councilman Valerius, we're going to be in a World War II Jeep along with our, our chairperson, who's going to be Charlie Cosgrove from American Legion. He's a 92-year-old Allen Park Korean War vet. He's going to be in a sidecar of a police car. We're doing a, a charity ride that's going to go in front of nine police departments, seven American Legions, and end up at the Knights of Columbus where we're doing a concert. So if you don't ride, you're welcome to join just for the concert. And just like at the street fair, we'll be selling some hats, Honor Guard hats. I have two for Mr. Smith there. And yeah, so kind of doing three events in one shot in one day. So everybody's welcome to come out and support, enjoy it. Some, some good acts. Johnny Cash, which I know Dad likes. Willie Nelson, 10th Street Tuesday, which is an Allen Park classic rock band. They practice on 10th Street every Tuesday. That's where they got their name. As well as Johnny Diamond, who does Neil Diamond at the Girls Who Yacht Club. So I want to invite everybody out for that.
Twenty-dollar donation.
That's this Sunday.
Twenty-dollar donation.
That's for the concert or the hats. And it's meant for our Honor Guard for their training, their uniforms and equipment. So that is an expense we wanted to put on the city, so just like other programs we've done, it's going to be fully funded by the people that want to help out, so. Thank you.
Since you're up there, I mean, why don't you congratulate him right now for the FBI, I guess.
I haven't done anything to get accepted, but I appreciate that, so. You gonna start running with me? I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Now we come to the consent agenda, and tonight's consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, claims, and accounts payroll report, finance of the finance overview, budget to actual report, balance sheet, and cash flow. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. That's the consent agenda.
I said no.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I was going to explain why I said no. The reason I said no is that I don't understand the situation. I know the money is there for everything, and hope that, I seen, oh, you're not on that one yet. Sorry.
You want to change the vote?
Yeah, I'll change the vote.
It was unanimous for the consent agenda. Now we come to resolutions. Resolution one is to approve the library's request for the agreement with JST to replace the current changeable letter sign to a programmable LED sign for $29,698.75 with funds from account 271-00985000. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Comments or questions?
I made my comments in my study session, and I'll do it again. I can see, I can see, I got, I got the question answered by the, the financial secretary and the city administrator that we do have the money appropriated for that and plus all the facade and whatever needs to be done at the library. So that's all I have, and hopefully that's the way it is, and that's all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Motion is carried. Resolution two, to have the mayor and council accept the donation of funds from Thunderbolt Lanes to be used to purchase two flat cameras for four years and approve the expenditure for the flat cameras, and this is for the police department. Motion, please. Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Comments or questions?
I may through the chair. This is similar to what we did the last council meeting. We had a purchase being approved by festivities commission. We just need to approve the purchase. And again, in this situation here, Thunderbolt Lanes is donating the funding enough to cover the two cameras and four years of service for those cameras.
There's no further comments or questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Motion is carried. Resolution to approve Amendment Number Four to the Water Service Contract between the City of Allen Park and the Great Lakes Water Authority. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Comments or questions? We will have our DPS Director come up and tell us what this is about.
This is an every four years, GLWA and the city reserves the right to amend the current contract every fourth year. They approached us, and we said we would like to amend it. The reality of it is you basically agree to the amount of water you will potentially purchase, no less than from them, so they can figure out their amount. And then you determine just two factors to figure out how much you pay in rates, and that is how many million gallons per day your highest point will ever be. If you go over it, there is punishment for that, for any community in their contract. And highest million gallon per hour, typically, obviously, in the summer, usually it's around July, sometimes end of June, the hot days. They pick a day that was the most flow that all their plants combined had. And if your number is over what you agreed to in the contract on that specific day, then you go over. After looking all the analysis with the engineers, Mr. Kibbe, Amanda, the finance director, we determined we could cut our amount down, and we still have a 10% buffer from the highest we've had in the last 10 years. So it should give us a savings of, I'm not looking at, but I think $104,000, they anticipate from what we're currently paying. 101, I'm sorry, 101,000. That's actually fun. Not for us. They have a meeting of all the communities, actually. And anyone that goes over that time, it's in the fall typically, they have all the communities together, and the communities determine what the penalty will become amongst themselves for that. Usually, usually the worst case, I'm sorry, usually the worst case scenario has been in the past, has been you get the highest rate that you might have had previously. Like, let's say 10 years ago, we were buying more water. You'd probably go back to that for four years term, not just over one year. You're just, that's it. That's the most I've personally seen them do. And other people, you have circumstances. You have many water main breaks. If you can prove you've had many water main breaks over that time period, a lot of times, communities are like, you can't control that. So as long as your residents aren't just blowing a ton of water in one day, which with the factors we have, we can tell. Some communities have put in water towers. That's why you see some. You've seen some communities enact ordinances that only even days you can sprinkle your lawn, and odd days for your address. We don't have that problem here right now. We watch it pretty good. We have something called a Whammer. It's a device they give us on the computer. You can see your flows every day, so we can kind of mark it what we're looking at. I'm sorry.
That's right. 1,000, is that a month?
100,000 is over a year's term, a fiscal year's term, yeah, starting July of 2023. So not this July. This would take effect July of 2023.
In the bigger scheme of things, it's probably not a whole lot of money.
It really isn't, when you think about it.
But it's still a saving.
It's, it's.
And as Tom, as Tom mentioned in the memo, there is an opportunity to put that money back into infrastructure improvements, which is dire, dire, dire.
Our average water main in the city of Allen Park is over 95 years old.
It's a dire need here to replace water.
Just, just so you know, that's why.
Could you repeat that, because I don't think.
Our average water main in the city system is 95 years old. We have over 80% of the city is 95-plus years old. Some are 100.
Councilman, did I say dire?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure we said that again.
And I would assume that one of the reasons we are able to reduce what we think we are going to need is because we've been making infrastructure improvements.
Yes, the pressure-reducing valves probably are going to be very pivotal to this. Since the last one, an update on that, that we had put in, yeah, knock on wood. The last one we put in, in March, when we had catastrophe, and they did finally get it in. We've only had two water main breaks outside of a fire this week, I'm not counting that one, from pressures from the summer. And typically, 2012, 2016 have had dry summers. If you look back like this, we averaged 60 in July each year. We've had two. Surrounding communities around us are averaging about 40 to 50 right now in July. So we have put money, hopefully, where we're supposed to be on this.
And that's what we are going to do with some of our savings.
Yes. Water mains, I think we need to invest into our infrastructure.
Training our firefighters.
We have an understanding.
It's a little bit of a source of.
We have an understanding. It's all right.
And that's not a source of just your Allen Park.
No.
No, no, that is not an Allen Park thing.
I apologize. They just don't know how to shut down a fire hydrant very nicely.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defend him for a minute. Adrenaline. You go fight a fire. You go save a life. Let's see how you do. I'll give him that.
Are there any other questions?
It's a comment of a dollar saved, dollar earned?
Yes.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried.
If I can jump on that one as well, I think it also goes into play a lot, too. Tom is still actively involved with the, with the GLWA. I've mentioned it here numerous times, we have to be an active player in that organization. I think that really, the negotiations go really well because we know who everybody is. They know him very well, and he knows his system extremely well.
Very good.
Resolution four, to approve the resolution from the Senior Alliance 2023 through 2025 Multi-Year Plan. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Supported.
Supported by Mr. Marcos.
Senior Alliance is the organization that provides senior services to the Downriver and Western Wayne communities. This is their multi-year plan for the period of 2023 through 2025. They need approval by each community to be able to move forth. Their, they get funding from the state of Michigan and from the federal government. And I think that is one of the requirements for them to be able to get that funding, is to have the sponsor year plan approved and filed.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That resolution is carried. We are coming to council comments, and I just want to make a little change because we have a council member who may need to leave before, before we are finished. So I will let Mr. Lally begin, and then we'll move on to the other rotation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We appreciate the support there. I do have to go to another important meeting. I, I just wanted to say thank you for the, for the Festivus Committee doing an excellent job last weekend. I tell you, they do it, I've been a liaison with the Festivus Committee now this year, and it's the first time I did it. And I'll tell you, they put in a lot of work. And I'll tell you, they put in a lot of work. Matter of fact, it starts today for next year. That's a, that's a much intense things that has to be done to the, to the, uh, the street fair. They did an excellent job, I think everybody should thank them for what they did. They did a beautiful job. So, did, uh, the Knights of Columbus people helped too. They helped, uh, situate all the lenders where they gotta be and everything, A, B, C, B block, and felt like a jailhouse, you know? A, B, C, U, A, B, C, U, S, D, U, B, that was a mess, but we got it, took it care of. And it was a nice weekend, it was a hot weekend, and, uh, hope next year it won't be as hot as this year. I do wanna, uh, support the Allen Park Police Honor Guard fundraiser coming up this weekend, just like the chief said, that's gonna be a heck of a ride, and it's gonna be good benefits for the honor guards of the, the great police department of Allen Park. And I want to congratulate the fire department. During this festivities and the street fair, all I heard was sirens going, helping people in Allen Park. Matter of fact, that was yesterday, I was driving to see my son on Belle Four and Philamine, and this fire, some of the fire truck was right behind me, I mean, I, I didn't know where to park, parked at the end, and they handed right on the, uh, Philamine, there was a little baby, two years old baby, it was, something was wrong with the baby, and they put him in an ambulance, they took care of him, I waited there until they were done, about a half hour, the baby was okay, came in alive, thank God. You guys are great, you guys do good work around here. All the, all the departments do good work here, and keep up the good work, okay? And the sidewalks, yes, I agree with you, young man, that we need to look at those sidewalks, we talked about it from the beginning of, when we come into this council, about the sidewalk, and we're still gonna be working on it. We haven't done, we haven't finished yet, believe me. Okay? Thank you. And Jesus, what else I say? Oh, another thing, we are doing a fundraiser for this young man. I'm gonna put it up here, I hope the, the, uh, the camera shows. This is young man, is the son of one of our brother knights and councilman, Gary Schleck. This young man has got autism, and we're gonna be doing a spaghetti dinner for him, and I'm gonna be doing the sauce for him, on behalf of the Knights of Columbus and his name, Danny?
Gary Junior.
Gary, yeah. I forgot to forget. Gary Junior.
Yeah, I was gonna talk more about that when I speak, it's gonna be August twentieth, uh, twenty-five, eighteen.
What, 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 Tony, finish?
You'll do it again. Other than that, I, uh, good night and God bless. The mayor told me to keep it short.
Okay, we'll go back to, uh, the regular rotation, Matthew.
Uh, again, I'd like to echo, uh, what my fellow council member, uh, Tony said about the festivities commission. Uh, my wife and I went down to the street fair on, uh, Friday, right when it opened, walked around, and then I spent four glorious hours sitting next to Mayor McLeod in the blazing heat with a forty-eight. Forty-eight ounce water jug that I finished like in an hour. But it was, uh, it was great to see everyone come out to enjoy it despite the heat and everything else, so. Also, congrats to Officer Seagrest, fifteen years of service to the Allen Park community. Congrats again to Chief Egan. Uh, I've watched him with his postings in regards to running and, uh, preparing and everything else, and it's, it's definitely inspiring, and like I said, uh, it's, it's not just for him personally, although it's a amazing achievement, individual achievement, but it's gonna benefit the City of Allen Park and the citizens of Allen Park with his, uh, the additional training and everything else that he's gonna receive, uh, you know, in the FBI Academy. So, uh, thank you for, uh, again, your inspiration and dedication, uh, to law enforcement and the City of Allen Park, it's greatly appreciated for sure. Uh, again, with the event, as Tony mentioned, hopefully, uh, with the, uh, badges, bikes, and wings, hopefully everyone, uh, has an opportunity, if you are looking for something to do on that Sunday, to come out, uh, from eleven to three. Hopefully, it'll be a good turnout, and the weather will be good, God bless. And that's it, I'll yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also thank, um, all the vendors and the citizens who came out to the street fair, it was an amazing time, it was definitely, uh, memorable for the fortieth anniversary, so I look forward already to forty-one. Uh, so, thank you to Festivities Commission and all the departments that helped, especially Parks and Rec with the trash pickup, I saw Kyle Carr just running around in that car practically every time I turned my head. And, as Tony said, I, I want to invite the whole community out to the Knights of Columbus for August twentieth, uh, between five and eight P M. The fundraiser is called No Family Left Behind Autism Where, Where's, What, Dinner? Uh, that's gonna be, uh, sponsored by the Knights of Columbus, myself and my wife are cheering, but we're doing it with the great help with, uh, our own mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Tony Lally, that's making this fantastic sauce, if you haven't had it, come out and get it. Uh, with bread donated by Librati's, uh, Italian Dolly and Bakery, cookies donated by Maize Bakery, salad donated by Bella's Pizza, pasta donated by the Valerio family, uh, and good volunteers, uh, from my family and also members of the Knights of Columbus and other members of the community, so a special thank you to them, so I'm sure it's gonna be a fantastic event. If you haven't made it out, please come out, it's a great cause. All profits will be donated directly to the Autism Alliance of Michigan, they've done wonders for my family and helped many other families in the condition that I, my family was in, and, uh, maybe soon, once you find out a diagnosis. Uh, and also thanks to Chief Egan to, uh, congratulate him to going to this national academy, I told him once, uh, once I got out of the army, I'm never gonna run again, but maybe I should start doing something more than get myself back in shape. But, other than that, uh... Oh, I would not be at the event that Chief Egan's hosting this Sunday, but I told my colleagues that I will, I was awarded a scholarship for the Electoral Officials to Protect America, and I will be flying to Washington DC, it was a full scholarship, uh, awarded to me, that I will go there for a certificate of public leadership, where I will learn, uh, important skills to bring back to our city and share to all of my council members and, uh, the citizens to make our city, uh, even greater place than it already is, so I look forward to that. So, I apologize for my absence, but I assure you, uh, that the city will be in my memory of every trip, and I talk to everyone there about our great city, and I'm the only one from Michigan coming for this cohort, that's a very selective group, uh, for the University of San Francisco, so I'm really looking forward to that, uh, Electoral Officials to Protect America, uh, through University of San Francisco, I know that's a mouthful, but I look forward to sharing those insights. Do you want to say with the sidewalks, yes, that's something we have talked about, that we continue to talk about, that is definitely something we talked, uh, a great deal at the beginning, and I know that is still on the agenda, that has not left, uh, the plate. And with that, I yield, Mayor.
Thank you. Charles.
Well, with the heat, you know, we only have like nineteen weeks until winter, but, you know, who's counting? Anyways, um, first off, I was hoping that, uh, that you would say, because Cindy and Tina, everyone on the Festivities Committee, they, they did a fantastic job. With the street fair, I was there for a couple hours, and then I was out of town, but, um, with what they do, like I said, the last meeting is remarkable, and like Tony said, that now they're starting for the next year's one, so, um, also with the street fair, with the, um, Dollar Show, parking lot with, um, the fundraiser with the beautification and the historical, I was told that they made altogether, made two thousand, two hundred dollars, um, and split with both of the commissions, so good job to, um, them with that. I want to say thank you to all the election workers, volunteers that came out to help make sure that everyone got their ballot in and every election, so thank you to the residents that, or non-residents that helped out with those. And then, um, to all those who email, Facebook message, anything with concerns, we are listening, I, um, again, whenever there's something, we always make sure to forward to the right person, and, um, and, uh, I try and take someone's thunder, but when you speak, speak to us and about your concerns, it does help so that, because now all of us, uh, go to each street and see these different things that are happening, and, um, but thank you to those who, uh, keep communicating with us, and also with communication with this new LED sign for the library, as I said, since day one, that we always need one in our city so that we can bring updates of different events in our cities, so that people, when they're stopped and not running the red light at Champagne and Allen, that they can look at the sign and see, oh, wow, look, we have to vote today or something, but, you know, just, again, it, those things do help, um, to, for better communication, as well as our magazine, that they do have all the events, as always I said, of what's happening in our city, because I know in September, we'll have our May of Michigan event going on as well, but I think that's about it that I have, but I just hope everyone has a wonderful rest of the summer, and stay positive, and I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Mr. Marcos.
Man, okay. Repeat everything else, uh, the street fair, unbelievable, um, Cindy Lauren, fantastic job, the Festivities Committee, uh, all the, all the volunteers, uh, worked tirelessly in the heat, um, and I want to give a special thank, there's a gentleman that, um, recently came to our city just a few years ago, and has really stepped up, uh, he's the director of the Allen Park's Citizen Civic Fund, Ed Wurzenbacher, Wurzbacker, sorry, I'm saying it right, Wurzbacker, uh, he was out there all day, every day, um, volunteering, uh, any information booth, helping directions, helping people find booths, uh, guy was, uh, was just a great help, uh, and, uh, don't want him to go unrecognized for all his assistance, he was there sweating like the rest of us, so it was, it was well, well needed by him. I was gonna mention the, uh, bikes, badges, and wings, but it's been done three times, so I'll pass on that one, but I do want to mention about the, um, DPS department, uh, we had a fire in our street Friday night, uh, Saturday morning, about twelve-thirty in the morning, the, the fire department, I think they were there within, I don't know, minutes, five minutes, it was very quick, um, and we also had two water main breaks consequently, um, on our street, same street, one in front of my driveway, and go right down the street, um, but I can't say enough about these guys that came out and did the work. Now, that was one o'clock in the morning, Saturday morning, um, and they were there till four o'clock the next afternoon, nonstop working on both these, both these, uh, main brakes. Our tax money's not being wasted on these guys, we, we, they, they, I'll tell you, they, they, nonstop, they worked, they came back, they cleaned up, they did a tremendous job, and they kept us all informed, they were going house to house, and I just can't thank them enough for all the hard work that they did, I really appreciate it. One other thing I want to bring up is this weekend in Allen Park, we have the citywide garage sale, uh, it's that next weekend, this weekend, twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, from nine to four, um, addresses and maps are available at the Parks and Rec office, uh, starting, it says Friday, so, uh, you can get them Friday morning, and, uh, it's all over the city, so you've got a lot to pick from, come to my house, I got all kinds of stuff. On the city's website, I also wanted to remind everybody that when you have problems, and you're not coming here, that's okay, um, watch it on TV, watch it on the cable, or whatever, YouTube, um, but on the city website, you have a, uh, you go to the website and you go under Government, you see, have a see click, see click fix, so you can let everybody, you know, the departments know what problems you're having, if you have an emergency, if you have immediate problems, need things to be taken care of. Also, uh, there's an app, uh, the Allen Park Connect app, uh, that you can put on your phone, and you can download the forms that you need for any department, for any questions, any, any problems. So, just wanted to bring that, and chief, good luck, I know you've been training, so congratulations, everybody, and thank you all, I appreciate it, and that's it.
Thank you. Dan.
Uh, first off, uh, Mr. Smith, like my fellow council, uh, members, uh, said, I, I share that concern, I'm a runner, um, so, I mean, I'm, I'm, you'll see me out on the sidewalks, I've caught a toe on one before and taken a tumble. My grandma, who lives on Angelique, is, um, ninety-seven years old, and she still gets out there and walks, um, you know, which is amazing, but it also terrifies me because, you know, one, you know, one inch lip, two inch lip can make a big difference to a ninety-eight year old. Through, that is, like councilman, or, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Lally, uh, noted, that was one of the things that we brought up in our very first meetings, unfortunately, it's not an easy issue. Um, one, one of the things that we face, one of the problems, obstacles, is trying to get, um, a concrete contractor to come out and, and replace one tile, or even if you're doing it, like, um, in, in a big area, doing a patchwork of tiles, because it's such a small job, and as, you know, the, the money that's out there right now for concrete jobs is, is pretty astronomical, that, that is one of the difficulties. Not to say that we're, as again, um, you know, my fellow councilpeople have, have noted, we're not given up or thrown in the towel, um, but it is, it's one of those things, when I, when I ran for council, I was like, yeah, you know, fix the sidewalks, and then I got here, I was like, wow, that is a really difficult thing, um, so, um, I very much appreciate, uh, you, um, coming up and, um, and, and, and making sure that that is at the forefront of our mind, and we are still addressing it, so thank you. Uh, Chief, Chief Egan, congratulations, man, I'm super excited. Uh, we talked about this, I believe it was May or June, in, in my classroom, we stopped by and we, uh, we were talking about this, it, it sounded really cool then, I'm so happy for you, I, I think it's gonna be, um, an amazing thing for you, but also an amazing thing for our city, uh, making those, those connections with different people around, uh, uh, different, um, officers around the nation and the world, um, bringing back those skills and, and, you know, hopefully sharing them with our officers here, that, that is an awesome opportunity. I'm, I'm, be more than happy to run with you anytime that you want, I'm actually coaching cross-country this year, you can stop by practice, I'm sure that, uh, you know, that the kids would get a kick out of it, so, um, any, anything you need to help, get ready, and I'm, I'm looking forward to bringing your golden brick up here, uh, when you get back, I'm sure, I'm sure, we can even find some stuff for you to jump over through, we'll, 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 we'll make our own little obstacle course. Um, so, now, um, I, as a teacher, am a sucker for an interesting question, and I had an interesting question posed to me. Who was I representing when I came to a meeting, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting? And, and I, I just have to think about that, who was I representing? Obviously, uh, democracy is something that is near and dear to my heart, uh, this is something, I mean, this is my, it's not just up here as my job, but, I mean, I am a, a American history teacher, um, I, it, it's, it's something that is core to my being, um, anybody that knew my father, he was a, a government and a history teacher as well, so it, it's something that is very essential to who I am, so it's, it's something that I think bears answering. And when I, anytime that I act in a, um, in an official role, when I'm sitting up here, I am thinking about every single individual that I come in contact with in a daily basis. And as a role as a teacher in this community, that is more than most, um, that's hundreds of kids, parents, um, my, my colleagues that are members of this community, um, and, and I think something that's really interesting is, is, is that since I spend so much time with the younger generation of Allen Parkers, uh, you know, kids that are fourteen, fifteen years old, um, I spend a lot of my time thinking about, I am representing, what kind of city am I gonna hand over to them? What, what kind of city, when I am not able to do this work anymore, will I give to that next generation so that they're able to continue and do this? And as I, my, my colleagues up here know, um, this is something that has gained added value in my mind, is because my wife is expecting a child in December, um, and it's very exciting, um, and one of the thoughts that first came to me, it's like, well, man, I, like, I don't know if I can still do council, you know, because I'm gonna have more things going on in my life? But the thought that comes right after that is, is that this work is more important now that I'm gonna have a child, because at least for eighteen years, I want them to have a community that is going to be the best possible community for them to grow and to, and to live and to play, and to do all the things that we do in this city. And so, I'm not claiming that I'm infallible, uh, I, I know that, you know, that I, I am also capable of making mistakes, as we all are, um, but I, I guarantee you, anytime that I am sitting in this seat or out in the community, you're doing the things I'm doing, I'm going to be making those decisions for, for this entire community, because it is that important to me. And if anybody has any issue with... Um, and if anybody has any issue with that, if you don't like the way I vote, you don't like the what, what I say up here, you don't, you know, you think I should shave, you know? As I've been told before. You stop me in the streets and you let me know, because that's my job. Come complain to me, yell at me in the streets, okay? Maybe don't yell at me in the streets, but, but that's what I'm here for. So, so if you do, if you do have that issue, please, please, please bring that to me. Um, so that, that's that. Um, finally, um, in a somewhat related note, um, I would like to uh, extend um, a big thank you to uh, Rob Fulton and Kyle Carr who uh, you know, fully admit had a difficult situation handed to them. And they uh, handled it admirably. Uh, I spoke with um, the athletic director, uh, Mr. Dawson, uh, this morning and he told me that the issue of the ice time was resolved that next day. Um, and that is something that, that right there tells me that we have the right people in the right position to um, continue to make the Parks and Rec Commission um, a, an amazing piece of this city that is gonna make this a great place for our kids to live and to, and to grow up. So, so big thank you to uh, Mr. Fulton and Mr. Carr. Very much appreciate you. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Daniel. Mr. Missy, would you like to make any comments this evening?
Just like to thank everybody for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Yep. Uh, I will, you're, you're leaving?
I'm going to leave.
I know. Okay, all right, I'll, I'll go fast. I will, uh, I'll go fast. Um, appreciate the people who have come out here, appreciate the comments. Uh, again, kudos to the Festivities Commission. Uh, as has been pointed out, it's probably the hardest working commission in this city. Um, Tony is right, if they aren't starting tomorrow, they're starting sometime next month. I know that they're already going to be taking applications from vendors in November and December. Also, the volunteers, the many, many volunteers who show up. Um, and the Festivities Commission members, like all commission and board members, are also volunteers, unpaid. Uh, and they give a lot of their time and trouble. They are out there pounding the streets at uh, fair opens up, but they've been there since six AM and they're there until well past uh, the closing time. Um, Parks and Recreation, yes, the trash removal. I know DPS was involved in getting some things cleaned up and cleared up and uh, fences moved. Um, our police and fire were a presence there, both as a, a booth and to assist uh, some of our attendees. Um, the Knights of Columbus. Um, I uh, finally figured out what they were doing there and Tony explained how that was done. Um, kudos to Chief Egan, very proud of that, he should be very proud of himself. And I'm very pleased to see, as I go through sometimes the claims and reports, um, that we are making sure that all of our employees receive training, um, which I think is reflected in, in the work that is being done by them for our community. Uh, the last thing I want to mention has come to mind with Mr. Marcos' comments. I think sometimes that residents look up here and they look as, oh, mayor and council, like we're special. Um, keep in mind that we are residents just like you and we have the same experiences just like you. We have water main breaks in front of our homes. Uh, we have sewer lines that dip in our backyards that will need repair. So whatever you are suffering, and as Mr. Lloyd pointed out, um, you know, he runs and he walks, we all have the same issues. We all notice the sidewalks, Tony rides his bike, he notices the sidewalks. So quite frankly, we are all dealing with the same thing, whether we're on that side or this side of this council table. And um, it is not as though it's, anything is being ignored. We're, we're aware of it, we are trying to find ways to, to solve the problems, take care of business, do it um, within budget, do it timely, um, and it's, it's on our list, believe me. And my list and my pile of stuff to do is not decreasing for some reason. Um, but at any rate, I know I probably missed something, um, but again, appreciate, appreciate all my council members. I appreciate um, the fact that we um, work well as a team. Um, can't tell you how much I appreciate that and, and the assistance that I had from those of you who were in the city during the street fair, um, and came and sat in temperatures that were not ideal for some people. But uh, it was very enjoyable and uh, uh, again, thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion. By Mr. Lally, seconded by Mr. Lloyd. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned at six fifty-eight.